Sorry. No, I think we're missing one candidate, Bob. There is one mother please.
Oh, he's right there. Bob, they're waiting for you.
Good evening and welcome to Chattahoochee High School. My name is Riley Crusell and I'm a member of the Student Leadership North, formerly Student Leadership John's Creek, Class of 2026, and a Chattahoochee High School junior. Tonight, my fellow Student Leadership ambassadors and I are looking forward to presenting nine candidates who are vying for four offices of interest to John's Creek voters in the November 4th election. I would like to take a moment to introduce the other ambassadors. Our team includes Sphorthi Kokala and Aditi Kuvari from John's Creek High School, Anya Shaw, Vishal Barmen, and Zara Tukka Vasquez from Northview High School, Amber Quinn from Shari Atal, Pranish Chana, and Ishida Tayabi from Chattahoochee High School, Elliot Chin, Benny Hammond from Centennial High School, and finally, Anay Bahagandhi from Innovation Academy. I would also like to take a moment to thank our Executive Director Irene Sanders for everything that she has contributed to the program. We wouldn't be able to succeed without her. In tandem, I would like to thank Lucy Liu from John's Creek High School, who has aided us greatly as the Ambassador Program Coordinator. Lastly, we would like to thank Principal Todd for permitting us to hold this debate here at Chattahoochee. We are very grateful for this opportunity you have provided all of us. Our Student Ambassador Team would also like to thank the Secretary of State, Brad Raffensperger's Office, for supporting the Ambassador Program as well as the competition. Now, on to the candidates. Firstly, not all candidates have provided phonetic pronunciation for their names, so in the case of mispronunciations, please have patience. This evening, we will hear from both candidates for John's Creek Mayor, Mayor John Bradbury and candidate Kelly Stewart. From candidates for Post One for John's Creek City Council, Councilman Delip Tunki and Anita Gupta. From candidates for Post Three for John's Creek City Council, Councilman Bob Aragla Eli and Shafik Janalji. From candidates for Post Five for John's Creek City Council, Councilman Larry Diviasi and Cal Couch, along with Tyler Chenault. Thank you to all the candidates for making time for us this evening. I would also like to acknowledge several dignitaries who are with us tonight. Scott Hilton, the Native Georgia Representative for District 48, Stacy Skinner, John's Creek Councilperson, Elizabeth Ward, Leadership John's Creek President, Arthur Host, Leadership John's Creek Board Member and President of the Rotary Club, John's Creek. Amanda Wile, Chattahoochee High School Student Leadership North sponsor, Richard Brooks, CEO of John's Creek Chamber of Commerce, Joan Compton, President of the John's Creek Historical Society, Roya Schweinbeck, Leadership John's Creek Board Member, Bob McDonald, Rotary Club of North Fulton, John's Creek, Bob, uh, Anaga Delakba, Leadership John's Creek Board Member, Loretta Hale, Leadership John's Creek Board Member, Linda McCain, our Program Director, Allison Wayne with ByStar, and Hardy Abbott with ByStar. Before addressing the rules, I would like to acknowledge a key issue within the debate: The Proposed Performing Arts Center. Although this is a very hell-bent issue that men and villagers feel key to this election, due to regulations surrounding the proposed PAC bond, which is on the ballot, incumbents will only be able to answer questions regarding the PAC with facts, not their own opinion. The incumbents who voted to put the PAC on the bond are Mayor Bradbury and Councilman Tunki. The two incumbents who voted against putting the issue on the ballot are Councilman Aragla Eli and Councilman Diviasi. In the interest of fairness, questions related to the PAC are limited and will only be used to gauge the status of the aspirant candidates. Although this may seem disappointing to some, the Ambassador Team encourages you all to do your own research after the debate, as the way incumbents voted regarding the PAC is public information and available online. Now, let's get into the rules of the debate. The opening statements will be in alphabetical order by post and the closing statements will be in reverse order. The post order will be Post One, Post Three, Mayoral, and Post Five. Candidates are allowed in two minutes to answer both. We have asked the candidates to use their opening statements to answer the following question to get to know them better. Candidates, please introduce yourself and provide some information about your background that qualifies you for your position. This question will be repeated. A question will be randomly drawn from a box by a moderator for each post. At all posts, the candidate will have two minutes to answer, then their opponent will have one minute to review, and then the original candidate will have an additional one minute to make their final remarks on the question. Specifically for Post Five, since there are three candidates, before a question is drawn, after, they will be asked who they want to debate. Then, a question will be drawn after the candidate is named. The same time rules will apply. We will also have a series of lightning round questions in which the candidates will be answered either yes or no once instructed by me to hold up their answer. Please hold your applause to the end of the debate. Finally, we would like all of you to silence your thoughts and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every standing justice for all. Thank you all. Our moderators for the City Council debate will be Anya, Benny, Aditi, Zara, Mishida, and Amber. Our moderators for the Mayoral debate will be Sphorthi and Elliot. On that note, let to the debate commence.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. I'm Anya Shaw, one of your moderators for Post One. Kennedy Gupta, you may now begin with your opening statements. Please introduce yourself and explain what inspired you to run for City Council. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everybody. How are you doing? My name is Anita Gupta. Thank you, Mrs. Sanders and the wonderful Student Leadership Program for hosting us tonight here. A little bit about myself. I have a master's degree in economics and a degree in computer science. My husband and I opened our tech company three decades here before. And then also, as a realtor for thirty years, I've had countless people by the home in the John's Creek. We moved to City of John's Creek thirty years ago. Well, it was not John's Creek at that time. But we moved here, and both my kids were born and raised here. They attended Centennial High School. For the high school, they graduated in twenty seventeen and twenty fourteen. They went to Georgia Tech for their last, for the college degree. We have, when we moved here many years ago, we realized that this is a wonderful, wonderful place to live. When my, when I was searching for the, for my council thing, when I was looking for the, to serve the community, I realized that our city has lost its focus. And I realized that we need to make some certain changes. I'm worried, but the question why I'm running for the City Council because I'm a concern to design. And I feel that our city has lost our focus, and that's why we need to make this change. We all live in John's Creek City because it has a wonderful school and amazing concrete of athletic offers. But then I felt that last year, there had been some decisions that are detrimental for our future growth of city and the health of the city. I've realized that there are some important projects have been ignored and the security issues have been ignored. And then, so I promised and I make sure that I went as a City Council, I will make clear on promises. Number one, public safety. Number two, fully protect our, our vast education.
Your time has elapsed.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, friends and residents of John's Creek. My name is Delip Tunki. My family has been a resident of John's Creek for twenty-five years. I have a degree in civil and environmental engineering, MBA in finance from GSE. Professionally, my career spans over thirty years in engineering, business, and village day. You give me the tools for problem solving, managing budget, and strategic thinking. Even before getting on the City Council, I was involved in the community for four, ten years, serving on the city committees and nonprofit boards, providing a deep understanding of the needs of the community. That's when I stepped up and served on the City Council. From twenty twenty-one, I've been making sure John's Creek is safe, financially strong, and future ready. Together, we kept the prime highest, one of the highest in Georgia, investing in the technology and training for officers, supported the balanced budget with the lowest tax rate in the county, opened Colicrick Park. Boardwalk at Town Center is going to be opening up, and introduced major space and robotics. Improved the roads, intersections, sidewalks, while increasing the transparency within the city body. We can't stop here. We got number one because of all these accomplishments. We can't stop here. We need to strengthen the public safety and again, support balanced growth, improve the traffic. More importantly, ensure the seniors and the next generations have the tools they need for the, to try. So I have education, experience, and proven results. So, I seek your support and trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Thank you, SLJC. Wow, I miss calling you that. I think my mic is off? Uh, good evening, neighbors. Together, for the past four years, we made this city shine. We had great parks. Even our dark park is the envy of the nation. And we invited some great businesses into our city. Boston side is like meddling. Quality is not an accident. There is a concerted effort, just like Olympic champions. They work, they sharpen, they focus. Just like that, we too did the same. But keep in mind, we have to review it ourselves. Check, we are spending our dollars wisely. Check, we don't have any excess baggage that is slowing us down because we are on a move. That is what I'm aiming for. Also, when you come back after a long day, I expect you to come to a refuge of comfort in John's Creek. No surprises, no sharks, no drama, but peace and quiet. That is broadly my mandate. And I intend to make sure that happens with your cooperation and with your oversight and with our, for people on the state. Here's what I want to promise you. Why did I think of this mandate? My previous lack of organization to fight combat jets is to tell us, if not you, who? This is my city, my home. I can't expect somebody else not to come outside, become a danger. That's why I seek your support. Thank you for trusting me.
Thank you, candidate.
Is it okay if I came from, because the slide is really, alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anything, turn on the lights?
Uh, no, the spotlight needs to be on.
And where's, where's the timer, so I know?
Uh, timer's right there.
We can see the timer. All I can see. Alright, is it okay if I stood here? I tried to please see the timer. Alright, friends, my name is Shafiq Janalji. I have been a resident of John's Creek for the last fourteen years. The reason I'm here in front of you is because I believe we need a change for Post Three. And I want to be that change for you. I believe we need a person that's going to bring leadership, is going to bring integrity, and more importantly, bring substance. I've been involved in John's Creek for the last ten years, serving in a variety of capacity in leadership roles. I've been a board member of the John's Creek Art Center. I've been a board member of the John's Creek Public Safety Foundation. I've been a graduate of Leadership John's Creek. I am also involved in the Rexon Park more recently as a chairperson. And I'm also involved in the John's Creek Symphony as a board member. Now, one of my aspirations for the city is very simple. I want to expand the opportunities for our business growth and our youth, alright? I believe we need to continue to invest in our recreation activities and our arts. Thirdly, as I mentioned, the youth, it also aligns with our nonprofits. But if you think about our youth, our youth, our future, I've been fortunate to work with the Student Leadership John's Creek Team and other youth programs. I brought the sport cricket to John's Creek. Why? Because I wanted to see youth engagement through sports. My philosophy about the public safety, and I know it's become a big issue, I currently sit on the chief's community ambassador team. I'm also a graduate of the Police Citizens Academy. So my goal is very simple. I am extremely ambitious for our city. I want us to be excited for what's to come. I'm looking forward to speaking to you. I'm looking forward to earning your respect. And more importantly, I'm looking forward to earning your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Please hold your applause.
Hi there, I'm Mayor John Bradbury. And the question was, how did we get motivated to run for City Council? I gotta go all the way back to when I was just a resident of my neighborhood. And my wife and I were concerned about some things in our HOA that we didn't think were running the way we thought they should be done. And every year, my wife would say, well, you gotta go to the HOA meeting. But as I'm walking out the door, she says, whatever you do, don't volunteer for the board. Which was great advice, by the way. But I really messed it up because I came back and I was president of the HOA. That put me on a path to where I had to get involved in a zoning case. I haven't missed a City Council meeting literally since 2014. And one thing led to another council, and then running here for mayor. It has been the honor of my lifetime, besides being a father and a husband, to be your mayor. I take this job very seriously. I'm very passionate about our community and trying to make it the best that it can be. We are, as you know, the number one best community in the country, so give yourselves a big round of applause for that. From a policy perspective, there are a lot of things that we're into. Public safety, we are also the number one safest community in the country. And we have increased our spending on public safety by thirty-six percent over the last four years. We've brought in new police officers. We have improved the training and the equipment. But we've also tried to lower tax. We now have the lowest tax of any city in the county. We also are the lowest miller rate in our history. During the same time, four years ago, we didn't have a town center. Today, that's coming out of the ground. That is something that we are all going to be able to enjoy starting very soon. In the last four years, we've done a lot regarding our parks. We've stood up Colicrick Park, like the mayor pro tem, Dill Tunki said. That has doubled the amount of acreage of our park system. And we've been making improvements at all of our parks across the city. And then transportation. We have done more in terms of intersection improvements, road improvements, additions to sidewalks and trails than in any other four-year period in the history of the city.
Candidate, your time has elapsed.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Stewart. A little bit about me, I am a Georgia native. My husband Tom and I have lived in John's Creek since 2003. I have a master's degree from Georgia Tech in city planning. I have served in the local, state, and federal levels of government. Professionally, I'm a human resources executive. I've also served on the John's Creek City Council in the city's formative years from 2010 to 2014. And during part of that time, I also served as mayor pro tem. Governor Dill appointed me to serve on the Board of Directors for the Department of Juvenile Justice. And in that capacity, I also served as a school board member. I am a recorded pianist, singer, and songwriter. The decision to run for mayor was not made lightly. It was not even on my radar. After speaking to several business and civic and community leaders with their concerns, I made the decision to run for mayor. And running for mayor is not about John's Creek being the best city, but about being the best mayor. And I'm running for two reasons. First, to restore leadership, ethics, integrity, and transparency to the mayor's office. And second, I am running to prioritize and fund our critical services first, public safety. Our essential services second, and our non-essential services third. I am also committed to protecting our tax dollars from waste and to protecting our quality of life. I look forward to earning your vote for Mayor John's Creek, November 4th.
Thank you, candidate. Please hold your applause to the other candidate. Thank you.
My name is Tyler Chenault, and I am a husband and a father. I have three kids that go to OC Elementary and Taylor Road right next door. And I decided to run because I love this city. I have a deep passion for the city and a deep passion for service. And that service has led me in different positions within the city and in the community. So I've served on the John's Creek Board of Zoning. And I've, I've happily served in that position. I served on the City School Engagement Committee as well as OC Elementary Student Governance Council, where I was making an impact in schools directly. And then finally, I am professionally a real estate agent who specializes in property management. And so, for seven years, we've called John's Creek home. I love this city and I cannot wait to serve this city and in this capacity. Because with being here and being proud to be here, I will give back to the people. People-first approach, to listen to you. I've listened to you for years. I've been in your neighborhoods. I'm also, I'm an active member of Congregation Georgetown. I also serve on the board there and teach Sunday School. So when I tell you that I'm in your community, I love this community, and I'm here to serve this community, I'm going to take that same passion right here on City Council. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to earning your vote.
Thank you, candidate.
Alright, I think the original question is, say a little bit about us and then while we're running. So, my name is Cal Couch, and I'm a local, I should say local, I should say Georgia native, it sounds like there's only two of us. So, I grew up and I've never really left really more than twenty-five miles from where we are today. I did go off to college one year and played baseball at Florida. Ended up graduating from Augusta State. Thank goodness we're a scholarship. And then I was parlayed that into a realist, to a finance degree. And so that was a tremendous blessing. So I've lived in John's Creek for five years. My wife and I Reagan have three children. Only one goes to John's Creek High School. He's a fifteen-year-old golfer. So, I am running because I'm so proud of our city. I have a servant heart, and I want to serve the community that served our, me and our family so well. So I look forward to hearing from you, the people, and listening to you. Your voice is what matters. We have the nation's envy of being the number one, the safest city, all those things. And it's because of you sitting out there right now. Can't see you, but I know you're sitting there. So, we are the nation's envy, and it's not the people on this, this council or running for council or standing with me. It's, it's the people that, it's our students. It's our neighbors. It's our teachers. It's our first responders. So, I'm proud to be a part of this city. I can't wait to get to know you guys, hear you, listen to you, and earn your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
May I take your lead, Mr. Shafiq? I am wide of here. So, my name is Larry Diviasi. And first and foremost, I'm going to thank Student Leadership North here as well as all the students and Linda, Linda McCain, as well as Irene Sanders, who put this together. It's a big deal, and I thank you for doing that. And also, just important, that you, our citizens, are here tonight because it's important. This is your city and your engagement. I applaud you for being here tonight. My name is Larry Diviasi. I've lived in John's Creek for thirty-one years. I've raised a family. I've been here before John's Creek became a city. I've raised a family. I built a career on technology and real estate. Then I poured my heart into public service. I, I served on the JCC, John's Creek Community Association. We were, we were a group of individuals that actually, when the HOAs had problems, they came to us and we pushed against the city to make sure they were accountable to the zoning codes and to make sure that they put citizens first. So that is important. I was also, I was also put on the BCA by Mayor John Bradbury. He recommended me for the BCA a couple years ago. So that's, that was, the BCA and the City Council are the only two groups that adjudicate cases. That was important. And little by little, I've, people ask me, can you move up to council? Can you move up to council? So I've been on council for the last four years, and it has been my humble gratitude and my humblest, you know, appreciation for serving you these past four years. There's, I stand on a platform called Community First because it's not about just buildings and budgets. It's about you, the people. It's about your safety. It's about your quality of life. It's about how we live together, and it's about your voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, candidate. Alright, we will now move into the Post One questions.
Can you move them forward? We can't just do the timers at all.
Um, yes, we can have the timers move forward. I would also like to inform the candidates of a new rule. We will be introducing you to be able to finish your sentence once our timers they stop, but after that, you cannot, you cannot continue. Thank you. Alright, we will now move into Post One.
We'll now begin with candidate Gupta. Candidate Gupta, your question is, considering the majority of the city's population are families, public interest is in favor of a more walkable and bikeable city for our children. What do you think is the best solution for our city? Bike lanes or multimodal trails, considering our size and density? You have two minutes to answer.
Good question. So, to be able to make this city more walking friendly and bike friendly, I think it's a great idea. Obviously, we have a very tight, urban, fast-paced city. Our population has increased, so the demand for the cars, lap car on the street, to be able to reduce the traffic on the street, additional bike lanes to be helpful. And also, well, I think this should be a dedicated bike lane to keep the people safe. If it is multimodal, then it could be a problem with that cars and bike accidents. Keep them safe. It's important to have the bike lane. Of course, also the sidewalks, so it will be important for the keep, for people to be able to walk and get to the destination. It will reduce the traffic on the streets and also promote the health also. Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Tunki.
Good question. City has been working on the connectivity. It's one of the reasons, like, we have that tunnel under 141. We want to make sure we can go from point A to point B without getting into the car. So, on the bike spot, yes, we are identifying the corridor. We just don't want to pick a small area and just have a bike lane in there. We want to have the corridor that connects to a place where the biker can enjoy the complete ride. So yes, we are working on multiple areas. Wherever possible, we are increasing the sidewalks. So, some of them areas, we are getting up to ten feet. So, yes, connectivity is a big thing, and that's what we are focusing on. In the next four years, like, we want to make sure that everywhere within the John's Creek, we don't have to get in a car. Go from, from here, Chattahoochee, all the way up to the Town Center, from there to the Colicrick Park. So, yes, we are working on it, and that's definitely on our radar, and it's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Candidate, you have two minutes, or one minute to respond.
Well, that's wonderful that City's already taken initiative to create the bike lanes in the sidewalks. Although, the problem with the ten-feet wide sidewalk, that's pretty expensive. So I feel you can take some money from there and make it to be seven or eight-feet wide sidewalk and invest that money into making most of the city bike-friendly. That could make it easier for the, for the people to be able to go from point A to point B instead of wasting so much money on the ten-feet sidewalk. And I absolutely oppose that. And yes, I support full harmony, making the city bike-friendly. And two-feet wide, which is more than thirty, and that can be cheaply just by be-stripping the road, we can easily accomplish the goal of having a bike lane in most of the cities. Hopefully, that should happen. Hopefully, that should happen in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Now move on to the second question. Candidate Tunki, the Performing Arts Center is estimated to cost sixty million dollars, with twenty million dollars coming from the city budget and forty million dollars from the bond referendum it passed by the taxpayers. Given that such large projects can exceed projected budgets, how will you on City Council ensure that the total expenses do not exceed the threshold? And if they do, what specific actions would you take? You have two minutes to respond. You have two minutes to respond.
I thought, sorry, I thought like something.
Candidate Tukki, you have one minute to respond.
Two minutes. Two minutes to respond.
Okay, PSC. As a council, we all decided that, yes, we always supported the rollback and kept the taxes towards. And like the big projects like this, we said, yes, we should reach out to the residents and put as a one referendum, so that residents can decide. The advantage and disadvantage, yes, it comes with a cost and there are some benefits. So they'll go back and look at that and decide. Coming back on to keeping track on the budget, yes, like overall cost is $60 million, which includes construction costs, construction documents, and a $5 million contingency, and another $2 million for the inflation. So everything is rolled into the overall project cost. And the $20 million within the city, it's been projected that it's not cash in hand. It's the accessible funds in the next couple of years. So yes, definitely, we made sure that all the components are rolled into the estimates based on the consultant feedback. And we are making sure that that's going to be done within the boundaries given in there. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Before you respond, candidate, candidates, please eliminate cross talk and utilize your notepads to communicate with each other. Thank you.
Yes, the city's spending the $60 million that we don't need to be delivered. So that is the biggest problem with any capital project that the city takes over can never get finished within the city budget. We have seen it time and again. The Magnus Street Reviving Road started at $37 billion, now is $78 billion. Same thing with Kani Creek Park. We took the bond $40 million in 2018 or '17. Part money is all gone, but part is not even 45% down. So we know this thing cannot be finished within the budget and the time. And this will be fiscal management issue. That is why I strongly hope and believe that the bond does not pass. And if it does pass, it will be a problem because then I know this will go over into the high budget, more money. And we'll have to take the money from the essentials and critical items, and it is not acceptable to us. So hopefully, the pack, people please understand, do not vote for the pack. It is going to be a big burden for us for that generation to come. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
So the projects like, yes, those are the past projects, the boardwalk at Town Center. The project that we took up and is happening, it's within the budget. Even the, we had the contingency left in there, so we were going to go come back and use it for something else. So projects are done, it's better, and we're thinking out of the box and we're making sure that everything is rolled into the projects. On the PSC side, my opponent mentioned about the Magnus Street. That's a multi-education project, Fulton County, Forsyth County, Alfreda, Anjasket. Yes, some of those projects with multiple public sectors are involved, it will take time. But boardwalk, the PSC is being done by us, and definitely to make sure that everything is rolled into that one. So according to the orders, if it passes, it will definitely make sure it's going to be done within the means provided for that. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. All right, for post three now. Candidate Aaron Nally, you have two minutes to respond to this. If you could get one thing approved by the council without objection, what would it be?
Oh, wonderful. You know, before even the PSC was put up for, thank you. Before it was put up for consideration for a bond or for a referendum, I had actually introduced an initiative saying that any project, if it exceeds $29 million, it needs to come to you folks because we don't want to encumber you with heavy taxes. That's why I wanted your input. That was one thing which I would definitely like to see to come back. The next thing which I'd like to see to come back is make more parking spaces in Colley Creek. It is one of the proudest things that it's being used extensively. Unfortunately, parking seems to be shot all the time. And I don't want people to be stranded in the middle of the night, especially young women. So that they don't get hamstrung there by themselves in the park. These are the couple of initiatives I'd like to definitely pursue when I'm on the, when I come back to the council. I can't see.
One minute, candidate.
Honestly?
One minute.
So then, I got a number of other things. Fiscal responsibility. I would like to start any new projects, especially when we have $110 million worth of projects by 2030. I would also not like to continue down this path where we keep on spending money without getting people's consent. Secondly, yeah, thank you. We have numerous complaints about building and renovating in John's Creek. I would like to revisit that code and see how expensive they're being and what kind of things are happening in our efforts. Also, I would build up on the integrity of communications. I've received a lot of complaints about stormwater billing, duplicate billing, not enough notices. Those are the kind of, these are few initiatives which I'd like to take and see its path. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. You have one minute to respond. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Great, thank you. And I hope that my glasses, I can see the timer there. First of all, my candidate, my opponent here, Bob, mentioned about the fact that he wants you, meaning the residents of John's Creek, to make a decision on the Performing Arts Center. So my question is, if that is his desire and his ambition that we as residents, including myself, have a say in the process, why did he not vote for allowing the council to go to the waters? Why was he part of the three votes that said, "We do not want to put this to the waters"? So you know, it's very easy to say things, but when things have to be done, you need to show leadership. Secondly, you talked about the parking in Colley Creek Park. I've been a chairperson for the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. I've been there for seven years. That's an issue that we will need to address comprehensively. If we decide to do short-term kind of solutions, it will come and pound us down the line. So we have to think about the park's needs and do it a comprehensive solution.
Thank you, candidate. Candidate Aaron Nally, you have one minute to respond.
Wonderful. We, three of us, voted down the effort to send this to the referendum. Why? We felt it was misleading the people who love parks. It is going to cost more at that point when we said, and therefore, we didn't feel it was right to mislead people who really love parks. It is going to cost. My friend just told us about MegaNet Ferry, how incredibly expensive it became. We don't want that to happen to you again, so that it'll disrupt your life. I talked about no drama, no surprises. That is the reason why I said no. We actually wanted it in the work session. I don't think probably he's part of that. In the work session, I suggested, why don't you make it 40 million? Make it 51 million, make it 60 million, so that it reflects an accurate figure. So that you folks walk into it with your eyes open, not being...
Thank you, candidate. Audience, please make sure that your phones are silent so that we can avoid interruptions. Thank you.
Candidate Judomshi, your question is, John's Creek is constantly growing, for example, the Boston Scientific Campus and the Medley Project. Many residents are concerned about preserving a sense of place and not just becoming another suburb. How will you ensure to involve citizens in development decisions?
Can you just read the first part of that?
John's Creek is constantly growing, for example, the new Boston Scientific Campus and the Medley Project.
Just wanted to make sure I understood the word "growing". So you know, sometimes in the evolution of life and in the evolution of a city, we have opportunities, but opportunities also come in challenges. It's great that we are attracting growing businesses. It's great that we have the Medley Project going on. It's great that we attracted Boston Scientific. But we also have to be careful, right? And how do we so-called have checks and balances in place? We try to follow the account plan. One thing that we have to keep in mind is currently, our tax base is skewed towards the residential side. All right? Right now, we have opportunities to increase our tax base on the commercial side. I personally believe, and many of you who have built the Avalon know that that particular Medley Project is an economic engine that can help us in future in terms of generating tax revenue. But we have to be careful. We cannot just open our doors to everyone. We need to be able to align ourselves with the account plan that the residents give us input on, because that account plan gets revised every 10 years. There are particular guidelines and all that as to what can happen in each of those pockets of our city. So I am absolutely in favor of helping our growing businesses to come to John's Creek, enjoy the quality of life in John's Creek, make our residents happy, create new humanities and all that. But I also want to be very clear that we have to manage our group and have smart group. Because at the end of the day, economy is going to help us. When businesses come to our city, they come for two reasons. One, they come for customers, and they also come for the quality that that neighborhood or that city offers. We have a trump card, which is our quality of life. We just need to continue to offer that to our residents, to our prospective businesses, and let them know that there are limits as to what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Candidate Aaron Nally, you have one minute to respond. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's fine. Thank you. Every action of city regarding this expansion is governed by a very sacred document called Comprehensive Plan. That actually is willing you folks, every five years, come and tell us what you want, how the city to be expanding, and what you want in the city when it grows. So that is a very sacred document. Most of us on the council take it very seriously. If there is a departure from that, it is only when the community has a drawn benefit, like Maturo's Metin, it is supposed to have an economic impact of $4.29 billion. That rising tide will rise not of course. Therefore, we do, we do know our building board has got enough to make sure that we're not losing any green space. We are all, we on the council set great tone attracting these businesses. And this will have a snowball effect, and more businesses will come to John's Creek.
Thank you, candidate. Candidate Judomshi, you have one minute to respond.
Yeah, you know what's interesting? Bob, my opponent here, seems to have the answers, but what he fails to understand is sometimes the facts may not be correct. He mentioned that the Comprehensive Account Plan is a five-year review document. It is not my understanding that it's a five-year review document. It's a 10-year review document. All right? So I think sometimes, you know, we get involved in activities as leaders, but then we also need to do our homework as leaders to be able to substantiate what we are talking about. The other thing I want to say to him is, he talked about me not being involved in work session, about the warning that happened five to, four to three. He himself agreed with others to do certain things. Issue a 20-year bond, make sure it's done, and everyone in the council agreed with that. So when you agree on something and then down the line you disagree and you come up with a new plan, I don't think it's right for the council or the residents of John's Creek.
Thank you, candidate.
Here.
Candidate, you are not allowed to respond. Thank you. We will move on now.
I'm sorry, I forgot to my question.
Candidates, as a reminder, there will be a two-minute question asked to you. Your opponent will be asked to review for one minute, and then your opponent will be able to answer for one more minute. Thank you. We will now move on to the layup all close.
Candidate Bradbury, there are certain needs and many wants that all cities have to prioritize, not all of which can be funded. Please tell us what you think the top three needs are of John's Creek and your top three wants for the city.
All right, so obviously, we are always living in a world of scarcity. And I am very proud of the fact that in John's Creek, we have tried our very best to live within our means. And like I said earlier, I'm a big fan of rollback rate. And I propose that to the council here a year as part of the budget. As far as things that we are always going to need, we are always going to need the very best public safety. And that is something that we pride ourselves on. That's something that I hope that all of you have been able to enjoy and take great confidence in. Obviously, we are constantly having to evolve from a traffic standpoint. We are unblinding in a major way from COVID. Obviously, the traffic and the cars are all coming back. We've done a great deal to improve our road network, but we have work still to do. And of course, the parks. It was said earlier that Colley Creek Park is only half-done. We talk about there being a second phase of Colley Creek Park. I think about Newtown Park, and we're probably on the 50th or 51st phase of Newtown Park. We are constantly going to be improving our parks, and that's something that we need to do because that's very key to our quality of life. As far as wants, I think that there are things that I would like to see in terms of our, in some ways, these are very basic things, but there are things that I personally would desire to see our city better at. We can always do better with customer service, always do better to improve the quality of the services that we provide, and always improve on our communication with you, the residents of John's Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Seward, you have one minute to respond. My top three priorities for this city would be public safety first, would be our infrastructure second with transportation and with stormwater, and parks third. It's very interesting to hear the mayor say that his top priority would be public safety, then transportation and parks with his strategic priorities that are on the website. The first priority is arts and culture, the Performing Arts Center. The second one is economic development. The third one is public safety. The fourth is parks, and dead last is transportation. So he has changed his tune yet again.
Thank you, candidate. Mayor Bradbury, you have one minute to give your opinion.
My opponent has an excellent memory. However, not always correct in how facts are portrayed. It's true, we have five strategic priorities, but they are not listed in priority order 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. They are listed across the board, and arts and culture is one of those. That's something that we as a council come to a consensus at our retreat for what those are going to be to help guide us in a major way. But I mean, look, let's talk about public safety. We have an $87 million budget, and that's a large number. That's a lot of money. But at the same time, we are, by comparison to our sister cities, really a much smaller footprint from a full-time employee standpoint. We do more with less. But over half of that budget on a yearly basis goes to public safety. Now, we currently have more officers today than we have ever had in the history of our community, more per capita.
Thank you, candidate. Your time has elapsed.
And I want to say, I want you to babysit my children or my puppies or something.
We have noticed that there has been an increasing level of dissent among council members. This has led to a lack of civility in discussions, especially regarding the budget. How do you plan to restore respectful dialogue and productive collaboration among council members if elected? The number one thing that I want to do for the mayor's office is return leadership. That is what is seriously missing. When the mayor ran for the first time as Mayor John's Creek, he ran on a platform of unity. Today, we have never been more divided as a city. He has divided the city on the Performing Arts Center bond. The City Council is divided, and the city staff has a 50% turnover rate. What I would do to restore civility and decorum to the City Council is to meet with each council member one-on-one, to understand their strengths, to understand their interests, and to get from their perspective what are the problems and what needs to be resolved. Then I would pull the council together, and we would reset how we're going to operate with each other. I don't want a new slate to come in and we have a new division. I would expect that some of the votes would be 7-0, 6-1, 5-2, 4-3. I want us to debate issues for the betterment of John's Creek, not to debate against each other just for the sake of having a divide. I want that division totally to go away and for it to be a council that works together regardless of what issue comes across our face. Thank you, candidate.
Mayor Bradbury, you have two minutes.
We have had over the last four years, I think, a respite for what had been a...
for what had been a period of long drama, embarrassment, sometimes scandal, investigations, some bad headlines about Johns Creek in the newspaper. It has been my great pride that we have, I think, really improved the tone coming out of City Hall. A lot of, frankly, I can't keep up with all the things that were said that are not true. But I will say this, we worked on a budget for three months as a council. We had it all buttoned up, ready to be passed. We had a motion on the table. There was an amendment motion made that had fifteen different items for quote-unquote "public safety." And so if you can imagine being in that situation as the adult, I can't vote for that. I don't care if you're giving me the cure to cancer. It's not vetted. It was important.
Thank you, candidate. Your time has elapsed.
Candidate Seor, you have one minute to make your vote.
Let me rebut that budget. The mayor makes the budget. He, what he is referring to are public safety requests. He knew about these from March, and he suppressed it from the city council to the point a council member had to file an open records request to get the information. He knew about it in March. He knew about it twice in August at work sessions, and he was told about it again in September to vote for it, and he still refused to amend it. So it just goes to show that public safety is not his first priority. He built the budget around one project, his Performing Arts Center.
Thank you, candidate.
Before we move on to post five questions, we have a lightning round question just for the two mayor or candidates. Please use your yes or no cards to answer this question.
With controversy around the PAC and some suggesting that even if the majority voters votes one way at the PAC, the mayor can push for their preference through other means. If elected, will you commit here tonight that you will not push for or against the PAC by other means, and you will uphold the will of the constituents?
Candidates, please clearly hold up your, uh, cards so that the audience can see them. Thank you. We will now move on to the next post.
So before we begin, candidate Chanel, as you're aware, there are three candidates running for post five. Prior to pulling the question, I'll ask you who you'd like to debate. So without further ado, candidate Chanel, who would you like to debate?
Thank you, uh, the incumbent leader.
Candidate Chanel, here's your question. With passage of the fiscal year twenty-sixth budget, many residents and members of the city council have become increasingly concerned with budget projections and the lack of communication between members of city council and department heads. How will you ensure transparency in our city's budget and make sure that funding is allocated efficiently? You have two minutes to respond.
Thank you. Uh, so I think first and foremost, the position of the leader should always be transparency. Uh, I would love, uh, to work with everyone, anyone that stands up here. I have no problems with, uh, getting along, working together, but I think it takes cooperation. It takes all of us, uh, to, to get the job done. So it's not just on me. Uh, it's about doing well to people, but together. So, um, I have the experience working on the board of zoning, uh, working with city staff, getting the reports, seeing those reports, bouncing ideas off of them, and communicating and talking with them. This is not new to me. This is something I'm very proud of, uh, and I plan on doing the same thing, being in office. Uh, you will always know what I'm thinking, always be transparent. I actually have a rubric that I decided to put together just so I can always stay on top, on, on topic, on task while I'm, while I'm leading. So my mind is always clear and it's always independent. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Dviosi, you now have one minute to respond. Would you like to interrupt your question?
No, I'm good. Thank you. So, um, Johns Creek is, the charter of Johns Creek is set up as a weak mayor system. There are two hundred and eighty-four employees in Johns Creek, the city. There's only three people that report to us, and that is the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city manager. The way the budget is structured today, all the department heads work with the city manager. She goes through all the different needs and wants, and then creates a tier one, tier two system. Okay, so if we're going to better this budget process, we need to change structurally the way it's set up. We need to make sure that the councilman, every single council member, has the opportunity to have questions to the police chief, fire chief, and the community, uh, director of community, community development. It's critical because today we have someone that is actually screening out information, hence the FOIA request for the, for when the police chief wanted four new officers.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Chanel, you'll have one minute to rebut.
Yes, well, uh, thank you. Uh, I, I have a relationship with our chief. I have a relationship with both chiefs, Chief Coons and Chief Mitchell. Uh, I'm a safety academy. That's something I'm very proud of, that I got to see firsthand what that looks like. So when I say that I'm going to actually work with our department heads and our leaders, it means that I've done the work beforehand, and I plan to continue to do that same thing. I don't know if a change is necessary, but I think asking questions, um, and, and being, making myself available and doing my homework upfront, uh, I think that goes a long way.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Couch, who would you like to debate?
Uh, the incumbent.
In question is, reports indicate that approximately seventy-five percent of high school students have experimented with substances like nicotine, marijuana, and alcohol. One Johns Creek only receives funding of twenty-five thousand dollars from the city of Johns Creek to address substance abuse issues, while these trends continue to affect student academic performance and athletic participation. What community-centered strategies would you recommend to tackle this challenge? You have two minutes to respond.
Unfortunately, that is, uh, that's real in this everywhere, including Johns Creek. I had dinner last night with, uh, the city solicitor, uh, last night. We were literally just talking about this very thing, how real it is. Anybody says it's just different avenues of drugs or what have you between one city and the next, but it is a problem. You know, I think it really starts with just the community outreach of being, the, the parents at home have to continue to support their kids and talk to their kids. And I don't know what service that, that is out there that can be provided, but I, I am proud of the fact that I know that we are probably the safest place in the world to live, and the best ranked city in the world to live because it is our parents and our kids communicate at, at a higher level than probably anywhere else since then. So I, I'm not exactly sure how to answer your question, um, as, as far as what community activities we can support or fund. But I do know it's a problem, and if I serve on city council, I, I would certainly look forward to researching that more. And I look forward to actually, you know more about this.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Dviosi, you now have one minute to respond. Would you like me to repeat the question?
So, we, Johns Creek is one of the wealthiest cities in all of the Atlantic area, and maybe even some of Georgia. So there is a corridor of, of drugs that comes in through Highway eighty-five and crosses our city. There, there is, there is money at the high school levels, and the money is a lot of times being used to purchase these drugs and, and Juve, and also. One Johns Creek is a phenomenal organization. In fact, I actually introduced One Johns Creek to Northview High School, and they implemented their programs. There's also a group called Summit Consulting that Fulton County actually funds for, for the individual that are more vulnerable in our city. There's a lot we can do, but we as, we have a, as a council, we have to make a concerted effort to provide a safety net and work with families because it's not only drugs, but it's also teen suicide. And nobody wants to talk about that because it's that dirty little object in Johns Creek.
Thank you, candidate.
Thank you.
Well, candidate Couch, you have one minute to respond.
Yeah, so no rebuttal there, but certainly, and you mentioned a great point because that was part of the question, and I did want to consider that. Um, could be drugs, uh, I, I do agree that, you know, Johns Creek is a very, um, very rich town. You know, we've, we've got a lot of expensive estate, we've got a lot of families that are prominent. And it, it certainly does probably attract some up from eighty-five and making them stop and making their badly available and certainly affordable by their kids. But the other thing is, is the nicotine, the vaping. And I can't go to the gas station, um, recently, anywhere I go. And the first thing I see while I'm paying is just the line from the, from the countertop to the ceiling is, is the vapes. And the kids are after school buying them. So I think maybe we can look into maybe that. Um, and so certainly we'd love to discuss that with council, maybe how we can maybe eliminate that aspect of how they get their nicotine or drugs. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. As a reminder, candidates, please wait to respond until the mods say so. Thank you.
Candidate Dviosi, who would you like to debate?
Uh, Charles.
Okay. Candidate Chanel, be ready for our response. Candidate Dviosi, your question is, the chief of police has indicated a need for more police officers in the upcoming years to keep pace with other municipalities. However, the city council recently approved a budget that did not fund additional police. How will you ensure this need is met if you are re-elected?
Thank you very much. This ties into the previous question and a question that was, uh, that the, uh, the mayor or candidates have debated. The police chief, back in March this year, requested, and it wasn't a simple request. It was, quote, "I have no option but to request four new officers with patrol cops because crime in many categories, burglaries, home invasions, is increasing in Johns Creek, period, full stop." Okay? So, and, and right now, we are about one officer per one thousand residents in Johns Creek. The, the average other cities is over two officers for one thousand. So we are falling behind, and as we, as Johnkey, Johns Creek grows, with the mentally, with nine hundred new homes, and with Shagrad, which is another two hundred new homes that are coming to Johns Creek, we must have a way to go ahead, we must have a way to go ahead to make sure that the officers, police and fire are fully, fully, um, funded. So it's not only the cars and the officers, but it's their equipment that they have. And the only way to get this is to have a real, meaningful dialogue with the, with the police chief and the fire chief so we can move it forward, and we could bypass a subjective tier one, tier two category. And that's where the open requ, open FOIA request occurred, and that's why on the dais, we have, we presented that, because that information was just presented to us, and I'm sorry, Melody.
Thank you.
Candidate Chanel, you have one minute to rebut. Would you like me to reread the question?
Yes, please.
The chief of police has indicated a need for more police officers in the upcoming years to keep pace with other municipalities. However, the city council recently approved a budget that did not fund additional police. How will you ensure this need is met if elected? You have one minute.
Thank you. Uh, so like I said before, this summer, I joined the Public Safety Academy for the reason of getting prepared to be in this position. I wanted to see what our officers saw, I wanted to see how I could support them and be able to have these conversations. So one of the many things that I got to do as a Public Safety Academy member was do a four-hour ride. So I sat with Johnson, and I got to see, hear, and feel what he feels for that four hours. And what I can tell you is, public safety is a top priority for our officers. We have elite officers. But at the same time, we can get more out of our community. One of the things that they, that the officers told me repeatedly is what they love about this city is that how we are, uh, we come together and support them. We listen to them. We respond well to them. And I will continue that effort. I think when, when more community knows about the safety and, and, um, the safeguards that we can put up to help keep our community safe, to help support our officers, I think we can be ahead of the curve without even having to step forward and talk.
Thank you, candidate. Your time is the last.
Candidate Dviosi, you now have one minute to respond.
Yes, thank you. As a, as a citizen and not an elected official, you can meet with officers, you could take ride-logs with officers. It's okay. It is wonderful. Coffee with cops, you could have these meaningful conversations. But as an elected official, we, we set policy, we are at the top like a board of directors. We cannot go into operations. I cannot pick up the phone and call the police chief and the fire chief unless I go through the city manager. And many times, she will want to be in those meetings. So the meetings and the conversation can be guarded because through everyone reports to the city manager. In order to change the way we operate as a, as a, as a, um, weak mayor system, we must change the charter, which was allowed, or the mayor can actually say, "Councilman, you be the liaison from the police and the fire to the council." That is not a curve. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Candidates, uh, before I move on, are you able to see better with the light shining on to this time? Thank you. All right.
Can you just check this? We can't hear the questions. That's the...
Uh, okay. We, I'm sure that the mics are checked, and we will be able to hear them next round. All right. Now that we have gone through one post, we will now have a round of lightning round questions. Candidates, please make sure that your cards are held nearer than to the audience whenever you answer. Thank you. Please hold them up for about five seconds, then I will continue. I will not repeat the questions. All right. Given the rise in popularity of Colley Creek Park and other nearby parks, where would you place park completion as a priority if elected?
Where?
Where?
Yes or no? It's yes or no question.
How about we adopt, candidates? Uh, would you support, uh, building nearby parks and place it in ensuring that, uh, park completion is ensured if you are elected? Candidates, please all answer. Thank you. Do you believe the current city twenty-twenty-six budget is physically responsible? Thank you. Candidates, please kindly hold up your cards so we can get there. Thank you. Should Johns Creek commit to adding more bike lanes along roads? Thank you, candidates. Do you believe there is enough space outside of schools in the city where teen mental health is addressed? Thank you, candidates. Are you committed to youth sports programming in Johns Creek? Thank you, candidates. Is Johns Creek Police Department equipped to handle the traffic and crowd control needs of the proposed Performing Arts Center and mentally development? Thank you, candidates. Do you believe city council members being unable to speak directly with department heads regarding budgetary matters hinders financial transparency? Thank you, candidates. Finally, do you support any tax increases to fund city development projects in Johns Creek? Thank you, candidates. We will now move on to our second post round of questions. Thank you.
Search transparency in our city's budget and make sure that funding is allocated efficiently.
That is a great question, an important one. When the budget is being presented, it's one of the key elements of how the future of the city, that the E R P thing will shape a city. This is a very, very important thing. So if the budget is presented, it's very important that the city manager present all the facts about the budget to all the city council equally, so everybody has enough answers and whatever questions they have, they have enough answers. They should not be, but they all should be treated equally, and they should not be able to, they should not have to request for the open record to get more information from, from what is, uh, being asked to discuss the budget. There are a lot of information they have to, they are not able to have, understand what is actually listed in the budget. So they will have, in fact, in the last, in the FY twenty-six budget. So they will have, in fact, in the last, in the F Y two hundred budget, there's some issues where councilor Skinner has to ask for the, over the open record to be able to get some answers. And that is why she had to come up with this last fifteen requests at the day of the voting. Those, those facts were presented in advance. If the department heads were able to talk to them directly, they would have, all these people would have been able to go to department heads and talk to them directly as to what's the need, what's the concern, what are the, what are the things that are crucial for the upcoming budget. So if they would sit down with all the city heads, all the department heads, it's really much more easier for them to understand the, the critical needs of the upcoming year and so they can make a, this is informed decision accordingly. As opposed to not having information and not being able to talk to them, like Mr. Dibiyasi said, they can only, they only can talk to three people. And I, I believe that's, it's not the rule basic. I mean, if they're able to talk to all the department heads and to be able to get all the answers directly, it will help them make a disinformation decision. So there is no, there is no last minute problem, as we saw in the last budget voting meeting, we all saw what happened. So they will not have to deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Suki, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you. The way the charter is written, the department heads will submit their request to the city manager. City manager will have a meeting with the department heads, streamline it, then present it to the mayor. Mayor is, will present the budget to all the council members at the same time. Like my opponent said, everyone will get the information at the same time. There is no treaty different in there. So the way it's structured, the project, the projects are being submitted and they are being put in the three different buckets. The projections are based on the financial model that we've been using. So everything in the tier one has been funded. Tier two, if you go back and look at the page eighty-nine of the budget book, everything in the tier one, tier two have a funding in there. Just because it's put in the tier two means like when the department head is going to come back and say, here is a need, that's when the project, those initiatives will be moved forward. So again, the, the way it's structured, it's been done perfectly and everyone has been collecting at the same time. So there's no disagreements in there.
Thank you, candidate. Your time has elapsed. As a reminder, candidates, before you respond, please wait with the monitors and finish talking. Thank you.
Candidate, one minute to respond.
So as my opponent said, all the facts are presented to everybody at the same time. If that is the case, then why did Mrs. Skinner had to open a request for the open record to get the information as to what police chief had requested? Then permission had come to the, to the last amendment, she had to ask for the request, open record for the request. So that is why, I mean, I don't think that's the accurate presentation, what my opponent said. It has to be, I mean, they should be able to talk to all department heads to be able to get the information beforehand so that they can make an informed decision and then they do not have to like, I'm thinking again myself, but then they do not have to rush up at the last minute while they're making a decision for the very, very crucial element of a city council, which is the budget, which is the foundation of how the city is going to run for next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate took, left two minutes to respond. The city has many needs at once and not all can be funded. Please tell us what you think the top three needs of the city are and what your top three wants are.
Good question. If you look at the budget, we have like an eighty-four million dollar budget, another four from surplus that's been added becomes eighty-seven. But sixty-four million is for the operations. So we still have the twenty million dollars like buffering there to take care of other accruals, infrastructure accruals. So the main things to make sure is public safety is going to be funded. And accruals, we keep adding to the accruals to make sure that they're being addressed when there's a need. So in 2026 budget, the accruals went up for the infrastructure accrual and going back to what my opponent said, the way the charter is written, the city council members, we are the board of directors, we don't get into the operations. So our role is to go back and look at the budget that's being presented and evaluate and do that. If my opponent really wants that, then you got to go back and change the chart. But the way current chart is written, the budget is being presented to us, we are evaluating the budget, we're making sure that tier one projects are being met and tier two will be met and tier three, yes, good to have it. So if you look at, again, like I said, page eighty-eight has all the tier one, tier two requests and page eighty-nine, you can go back and see like what is requested, what's being funded. So we do have the funding needed. So if anyone is telling that public safety is not being funded, that's not right. And another thing that's been going, officers ratio. So we, we need to look at the three dimension on that one. We just can't look at the residents, thousand residents to the officers. We got to look at third angle to the crime rate. We have the lowest. So our neighboring cities has twice the crime rate and national average is three times. So we just can't look at the ratio of officers to the residents and keep increasing it. We got to look at the third angle too. So that's exactly what the city council and the police chief is looking into that one. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate give like one minute to respond.
So can you repeat the question again because there were a lot of conversation from that topic?
Sure. The city has many wants and needs and not all can be funded. Please tell us what you think the top three needs of the city are and what are your top three wants?
Great question. So for definitely for me, number one is public safety, fully from public safety. There, there is, as we know from the page ninety-four of the budget, there is a critical need for the chief of police for the dishy cadets and the cars and some, and the three fire trucks are obsolete and old that need to be replaced. So they have to clearly need a five point four million towards these safety centers. We need to, first of all, first of all, we have to fund from that. And secondly, we have to ease the traffic. Traffic is a biggest problem in the city. So we have to use T plus dollars to make sure we finish all the transportation projects and we can ease the traffic. Number three, there are a lot of projects which are unfunded. There's about eleven, about ten million dollar projects in the park and the infrastructure which is unfunded. We need to first fund those projects to finish those requirements that we had and finish those first before this starts coming up. Other things, these are the clear priorities for me. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Suki, you may now give a one minute to respond.
Thank you. So everything has been funded. Page ninety-four, my opponent said, as I mentioned before, we got to go back and look at the budget before you even make a statement. Page eighty-nine already said it's funded. So ninety-four is the more explanation of what is needed. So it's already been funded. So coming back to transportation, T plus projects, yes, we have done almost like fourteen projects from the T plus one and four are in the works and T plus two, we went different markets to address congestion, bike lanes, bridges and landscape and streetscape. So we are definitely going back and making sure that T plus dollars are spent in a good way. Infrastructure, we keep accruing it. So if you look at this year's budget, we funded fourteen police cars. So there is a reason we are funding accruals. When there is a need, we draw from that. So everything has been funded as requested.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Aaramelli, your question is, the city updated the parks master plan in two thousand twenty-three, which calls for several million dollars in park enhancements and improvements over the next five years. The two thousand sixteen forty million dollar parks bond money has been totally spent and there's another forty million bond referendum on the ballot to build a performing arts center. What is your plan to accomplish the parks project the community is expecting? You have two minutes to respond.
Yeah, this is what we talked of, Scope Creek, the expense creek. Yes, initially by twenty sixteen, when we had the parks bond, it was forty million. This was supposed to have done, Colley Creek was long with eight other projects. Then happened. But if you go back to review of plan earlier, this gentleman was saying is every five years we revise the document. We don't, we review and visit the conference of plan. We don't update, we update every ten years. Going back to the case of the past plan, twenty-six, twenty-three, we had a revision. This year, we have three point six billion dollars worth of past unfunded. By twenty thirty, this will grow to six point two million. This is what is top of Scope Creek and when you're not budgeting enough dollars for this, this is continually happening. And that's when you had this flash guard on, do we have adequate budget? I said, no. Please understand, when decisions are taken on the council, democracy works in a straight way, which means whatever the majority says, it goes. It doesn't have to be for the benefit of the city or it doesn't necessarily have to be beneficial, whatever the will of four, top four. So this is what was the setting on council. When you talked to Lloyd of council earlier, the general candidates addressed, this was what was happening. And I, I strongly suggest, when we talk of, when we talk of interactions between council members, I strongly urge, stop smirking, stop, you know, being contentious, the people are looking at each other. A more income of decency will achieve a lot more than any other tools and decorum tools we install. I strongly believe that all this would have been taken care of if instead of saying that we are running out of money, running out of money, address it.
Thank you, candidate. Your time has elapsed.
Candidate Djalvi, you have one minute to respond.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Yes.
The city updated the parks master plan in two thousand twenty-three, which calls for several million dollars in park enhancements and improvements over the next five years. The two thousand sixteen forty million dollar parks bond money has been totally spent and there is another forty million bond referendum on the ballot to build a performing arts center. What is your plan to accomplish the parks project the community is expecting?
Fantastic question, and I'll tell you why it's fantastic question for me. I sat on the recreation and parks advisory committee for seven years, more recently as a chairperson of that committee. My team and the Parks and Rex team actually went to the details of the recent plan that was put forward. Now, keep in mind, in the last seven, eight years since we raised the funds, we have had numerous bonds, I mean, parks built, not only Colley Creek, we have many pocket parks that have been established, right? So as, as a team, when we went through this, there was a comprehensive plan. At the same time, the performing arts center is not one of the either. I, a lot of times I hear this, that you, it's, it's mutually exclusive. You can do this, but you can't do this. I'm a believer, when opportunities come, try to do both, but do it in a cohesive manner and a solemn manner.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Aaramelli, you have one minute to respond.
One, as a council, we expect people like Big Booz of the Rex and Park team to let us know what is required, what is lacking, and then the council acts. Now, how about this three point six million dollars unfunded request this year? We didn't have crickets. What about six point two million dollars, which is going to be the result at the end of twenty thirty? Crickets. Unfortunately, this will continue if those become. Therefore, I strongly urge whoever's on the committees, whether we nominate people on the committees, please, we, we really admire you for stepping up, working for the city. I also want you to get honest feedback from you folks. Two million dollars we spent on the parks and yet we see things can be done better. And that's where I expect people who are on the committees to come up. Unfortunately, my friend who was the chair of that, he didn't come to us. I wish he had come to us and we would have definitely addressed, though it's not as much a strong priority like public safety.
Thank you, candidate. Your time has elapsed.
Candidate Dudalji, here is your question. Multiple times this year, residents have protested the development of houses near Sheik Rag Park citing environmental concerns. How will you address environmental policy in terms of zoning and how will you keep Johns Creek green? You have two minutes to respond.
Great, thank you. But let me just address the question of I didn't go to my council members. I think there's a thing called protocol. So my team, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, is headed by the Parks Department Director. Whatever concerns we have, we go to her, she goes to the council. So it is not accurate to say that I didn't, you give me the liberty to go and talk to people, how did cricket get done in Johns Creek? I spent ten years talking to everyone here, right? As far as that particular project is concerned, one thing you have to understand, that zoning project that came about, first of all, we have the comprehensive account plan. My question is, how is it that that particular zoning that was deferred and came back again and was an important element for the Sheik Rag community, because they all came in green shirts? How is it that my opponent here decided to take some actions in that particular zoning process that not only ended up adversely affecting the residents of that particular community, but also put the city at risk? And the city had no choice but to approve that particular project, which was Tolstoy brother. So when we talk about environmental consciousness and living within our boundaries, we have to do that. We had the comprehensive account plan. But I think as leaders, you elect us as leaders, we have a responsibility to know what are our ethical conscious responsibilities, but more importantly, from a protocol perspective, we cannot just go out and do things and put the residents at risk and our city at risk.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Aaramelli, you have one minute to respond. Would you like me to repeat your question?
Yes, because you answered an entirely different question.
Multiple times, multiple times this year, residents have protested the development of houses near Sheik Rag Park citing environmental concerns. How will you address environmental policy in terms of zoning and how will you keep Johns Creek free? The one question.
Here's what, earlier on, we said, the comprehensive land use plan is a very sacred government. The, what happened at that particular place is a decision, but our building codes are such that we do not allow green space to be released. The Chattahoochee National Forest, which is there, that is a separate boundary, we can't touch it. There is a requirement, what needs to be done along the river. These are all fortified. The city also has some certain ports that it can't disturb from the river's edge to seventy-five feet. These are all there to ensure that the green space is protected. And especially that particular project which we have in, we also have a beautiful project called Chattahoochee Corridor, so that all folks can enjoy it because we do believe in green cover. This particular council has gone the extra mile to earn the water increasing.
Thank you, candidate. Before you respond, candidate, please ensure that you do not respond until your, it's your allotted time. Thank you for the heated debate, though. Sorry.
Candidate Dudalji, you have one minute to respond.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as, as my opponent said, I didn't answer the question. I will say one thing, right? When we talk about green space, over the last six, seven years, we have doubled our park space from two hundred acres to four hundred acres. As part of the overall green space, every element of our city activities is trying to make sure we maintain green space. Because if you want to create a walkable city, how are we going to enjoy that quality of life if we have just bridges next to us? We got to maintain that. It is an important element, not just for sports and recreation, but those who like to just walk around. People love Colley Creek Park. Why? They love walking on the trails and all that. So I know from my experience perspective as a chair of Rexon Park, green space is not just important for those who are in sports, but everyone to maintain the quality of life.
Thank you, candidate. We will now move on to the mayoral post.
Mayor Bradbury, our city council strategic priorities include boosting recreation and parks and arts and culture, yet there are gaps in youth programming. As mayor, how will you expand partnerships and programs, especially for you, to ensure these new initiatives foster meaningful youth engagement?
So it is true that our community has a need and demand for youth sports and recreational programming that is outstripping oftentimes our facilities, even with the addition of the Colley Creek Park. We have sought to try to do things that are innovative as much as possible, especially partnering with Fulton County Schools. The schools have exceptional facilities, you know, just like here in Chattahoochee. This is where we've had the state of the city and all the other high schools. This is a beautiful auditorium. But they have wonderful turf fields and we have gotten But they have wonderful turf fields, and we have gotten an agreement with Abbott's Elementary, and we are working to try to get expanded agreements with two other elementary schools, where hopefully we'll be able to expand for the youth football. And, you know, youth football, I'll take as an example. That is something that the council and I have talked about. We have asked that we have a field painted for stripes for football that has been there in Colly Creek since, actually, February. And the council did a good job telling the staff that we want to reorganize and simplify and make it easier for our families to interact and engage and find where they can get plugged into youth sports here in John's Creek. But it is something that I have said, and I'm committed to making a higher priority in the second term. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Stewart, you have one minute to respond. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you. What the mayor just described is parks partnership with the schools. You need to understand, you and I are being double taxed. We already pay taxes to the schools, now through our city tax, we're paying more taxes to the schools. What we need to do is to prioritize the budget. The funds for the, in the comprehensive, in the capital improvement plan, the forty projects that we've heard about tonight that are tiered, there are eight parks projects that are two point eight million dollars that have zero funding. And it's because it's being crowded out by his Performing Arts Center, the construction documents. But we need to use our own parks, we need to properly fund them in the budget and stop the double taxation that's going on.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Bradbury, you have one minute to repeat the question.
All right, so my big regret for the Performing Arts Center referendum is that I think I naively thought that this would be a very fair, honest debate, conversation, discussion among all of us as members of this community about the merits of the Performing Arts Center. There was talk earlier about division in the community. I don't know that our community has been divided like it is now, really, in the last four years. But it has been because of misinformation that is flooding into social media. And let me just tell you, yes, the Performing Arts Center construction documents for five million dollars, which is a lot of money, it is in the budget as a placeholder, and it very specifically says pending the outcome of the referendum. My opponent knows this. I could spend all night up here just trying to refute some of these things, but we've got a great city, and I hope you see that.
Thank you, candidate.
Question for candidate Stewart. Between fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, the city has experienced little growth in their primary sources of revenue. However, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget is projecting a nine percent growth in the city's largest revenue source, the local option sales tax fund. If this results in a budget shortfall, how will you address this? You have two minutes to respond.
Governor Kemp has said the state of Georgia is going to have a neutral budget, no increases. Sandy Springs and Alpharetta, our sister cities here in Fulton County, are the largest generators of the sales tax revenue. They are keeping theirs neutral as well. John's Creek, have you heard the moderators say, we increased ours nine percent? So there has to be a motivation for that. The revenues have been manipulated, the expenses have been decreased for the sake of the Performing Arts Center. This two thousand and twenty-six budget is built around that one thing, in infrastructure accrual funds, in the capital improvements, it's, it's throughout the budget. To answer your question, how will we do that? I would flatten the local option sales tax like the state and like the sister cities are doing. I would prioritize and fund our expenses, and I would cut wasteful spending out of our budget that it is loaded with it for two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Bradbury, you have one minute to respond. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I'm great. All right, so one, I think that is a sleight of hand trying to make it sound like that we are raising the local option sales tax. What is being talked about is the estimation of what is projected to come into the city on the existing local option sales tax. That's the sales tax that you pay when you buy candy bar at the gas station or whatever. It is true that, well, it's not nine percent, it's actually seven percent. And it's based on the model. Uh, I gotta tell you, we've got some people that work for us in the finance department that know these spreadsheets and some of us there than I do, for sure. But here's the thing, we have been experiencing large surpluses every year, year after year after year. And every year, the council says, well, what can we adjust? What levers can we adjust to try to make it where we don't have so much that's not going to work with the taxpayers, right? Because that's not good. You're, you're paying the tax, and you should be getting as much bang for your buck as possible.
Thank you, candidate. Your time has elapsed.
We tried to dial it back.
Candidate Stewart, you have one minute to respond.
The biggest problem with this budget is that it was built without a finance director, because there has been seventy percent turnover in the finance department under Mayor Bradbury. The second problem with this budget is that you need to look at your budget, because it is a nine percent increase, not a seven percent increase. And it is inflated for the purpose of the Performing Arts Center. Not only have the revenues been manipulated, but the expenses have been cut, and they're not being fully funded. Our critical services are not being fully funded. And this tier one and tier two and tier three that you hear of, it's not for the city manager to decide the priority, it is for the council to decide the priority. And the way to deal with this is to bring the department heads and the council together. While they cannot interfere with each other, they must collaborate and work together so that we have transparency and that we have full knowledge, and these two parties can decide what the priorities are together. And I guarantee you, if they sat at the table together, the Performing Arts Center would not be the priority.
Thank you, candidate. Audience, we encourage the applause at the end of the debate. Thank you.
Candidate Chanel, would you like one?
Incoming.
Candidate Chanel, your question is, considering the median age of John's Creek residents is forty-five point two, how do you plan on continuing to attract younger families and peoples either moved to or remain in John's Creek? You have two minutes to answer.
Seeing as I'm under the median age, what attracted me to John's Creek, and I can speak from experience, was our schools and our community and the quality of life. I think as we continue to improve on these things, this is what attracts people always. Anyone, no matter what background you have, they want to have a safe neighborhood, great schools, great opportunities in education, to keep more money in their pockets so they can enjoy their quality of life. I don't know if my mic's on, but hopefully you can hear me. To attract more people, I would just say, let's keep on doing the things we're doing. Keep, uh, keep investing in our schools, keep investing in our community, but also find the needs and wants of, of the young, young professionals, young people. A lot of times, they want things like Avalon and our medley that's coming up. And so I think the, the best way for us to do just that is look at what we have, continue improving on what we have, and that's a great place to live, and, and then, and then look at other opportunities.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Daudji, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you. So I love this question, because everyone, when I talk to in John's Creek, they say, there's not enough restaurants, there's nowhere to go, the nightlife, I've got to go here, I've got to go there. So how do we attract young people? It, it's about building a sense of place, just like Roswell has. Every, every month, they have this event in the street, a festival, and it attracts thousands of people there. Why don't we have some of that here? We will soon, though, with the medley, we're gonna, we're gonna take John's Creek Parkway, we're gonna block that off, have more festivals, and the town center will be the catalyst to bring people and keep people here. And also, it's not always about jobs going here, going downtown, moving to Alpharetta. We need to find a way, an incubator type setup here, where kids can come in and learn how to start business, how to be supported in a couple of different ways, to keep jobs here and keep people here.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Couch, before I have a question, please.
Candidate Chanel, you have one minute to reply.
Apologies.
Yes, we, we have a wonderful opportunity with the medley coming up, and I would love to lean into that and create more of the things like downtown Alpharetta, like Brad Apple, like Avalon. Uh, but I want us to also be different. We have those things, and we use those things. And quite frankly, a lot of our John's Creek money goes to fund those things. We're spending a lot of John's Creek money outside of John's Creek. So having a place here where we're also encouraging our young people who are graduating, like Northview or here at Chattahoochee, come, stay here, find, find jobs here. Let's, let's encourage our, our young people that are already here, that have seen this, that love this, find ways to reach them. Listen, I'm all for more young people who look like me, who are, who are just as young as me, to get in. Quite frankly, it is a little hard for us to live here. It's, it's a little hard because of, of the price of homes. But we can find new ways. I don't have all the answers, but I will.
Thank you, candidate.
Sorry about that. Before I have a question, who would you like to debate candidate couch?
We're learning so much from you out there.
Candidate Daudji, please hear us respond. The question is.
Who are you asking the question?
Um, according to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, John's Creek, Georgia is part of a major hub for human trafficking. However, we continue to hold the title as one of the best cities to live in the nation, but many of these instances of human trafficking are unreported and unaddressed. How do you plan on keeping John's Creek's young people safe? You have two minutes to respond.
Just the first part of that question?
According, the first sentence? According to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, John's Creek, Georgia is part of a major hub for human trafficking. However, we continue to hold the title as one of the best cities to live in the nation.
I'm actually surprised that we are considered a hub. That would be surprising to me. Human trafficking, I think it's, uh, I think it's getting properly settled at a much higher level in politics than the local municipal level. Certainly, I would, I would encourage, if I had time on the city council, and you guys were so kind to like to me, that we would talk to our specific police force and, and talk to them about, or maybe either fund or encourage them to seek training that would help understand in the human traffic, uh, human trafficking aspect. I know that, um, just across the river at P Street Corners, I know that on the news, I saw unfortunate news that one of the hotels was actually participating in such disgusting behavior activity business, and that just got busted. So I, I would really probably want to fund or ask council to, to spend the money on the education of our law enforcement, and just make sure that they're aware of what that looks like, so we can cut down on that.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Daudji, you have one minute to respond.
Yes, this is actually horrible what's going on on the northern side of Atlanta, Roswell, Alpharetta, John's Creek. Um, Roswell has taken such an aggressive stance in about the last year to shut down human trafficking and to go after these massage partners out there, because they are a front, not only for human trafficking, but they're a front for all kinds of activities, from drugs to, you name it out there. So it's, while they're working on their city to clean that up, I think there's a broader scope and a broader plan, a task force on the northern side of, of Atlanta, including Alpharetta, John's Creek, Roswell, and possibly Milton, and maybe Sandy Springs. If that task force is established, we can do a lot of cleanups here. But this goes back, back into the corridor that goes from eighty-five south to north, that moves all the way up to East Coast. It's not only drugs, but it's also human trafficking. So we must clean up this cancer here. We're better than this.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Couch, you have one minute to respond.
I totally agree, and I think John's Creek's already made progress where, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't, but I'm pretty sure that we have taken the stance already that there, there will be no new massage parlor, etc. And then I would also, you know, again, if, if I had to say, I would just really want to focus on, even at the higher state level and the local cities around us, to continuously work together, uh, our police department and theirs, and everybody else's up and down eighty-five, seventy-five, wherever the corridors are, they're bringing the traffickers in. So I would just want to make sure that we support them to whatever they need, fund them, put them through the education, make sure that they are aware of the signs, and be able to get ahead of it, because that is, uh, that would actually be one of my top properties, too. I did not, did not realize we were a major hub.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Daudji, who would you like to debate?
Tyler Chanel.
Candidate Chanel, ready to respond after he answers.
Okay, candidate Daudji, your question is, in the metro Atlanta area, twenty-three of the twenty-four total art centers are not self-sustaining. If the art center bond were to be passed this November, how would you ensure it is self-sustaining? You have two minutes to respond.
Great question. So, um, I love the arts, plenty of it, so loving, okay? This is a great idea, but a horrible execution by, by the city, by itself. So how I would do this? I have already gone out on my own and started, just in case the, the vote in November is a yes. We need to find a way to provide a soft landing for this, because while the construction documents and the construction of the facility are, will move forward, how do we cover the M and O or the operations? How do we keep the lights on? So I went ahead on my own and found an organization, a large organization, a publicly trained organization, that said, hey, let's go ahead, and I showed them all the information, and they said, I'm interested. I want to help provide, you know, cover for, for the, I want to run the facility. I can, I can provide a, a, a.
Thank you, candidate.
Sorry, no.
I had so much to talk about. No, it's one minute, I got one minute. It's a lifeline. So, so, okay. So I have already, and I, I already found this organization that would come in and potentially, it's a public-private partnership, that would come up, where it would come in and help and look at dating rights and allow us to have a financial foundation to move forward, so the burden on the city and the taxpayer is lessened. That should be, that should have been done prior to this becoming a bond referendum. In addition, in addition, when we were debating this back in the work session, I asked, I asked the council, what is the rush? Why are we making this a political football? Because it's tore the city apart. So I asked, if we don't put it on November, why not move it to May? That's our next election. Give us time to properly put this together and take the politics out of the arts. That's what should have been done, but I was shut down.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Chanel, you have one minute to respond. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Councilman, I hope you didn't overshare too much information. I know we have a duty to keep some of that information held, but I, I do agree in the aspect that we should look at other alternative fundings to, to fund this performing arts center. Uh, I would be a strong proponent of that. And listen, John's Creek has all the attention right now. We're being marked on U S News and all these other sites, it's the number one place to look, right? We should look to all their private partnerships to fund this. Hey, come in this city, look at our quality of life, look at our schools, look at what you can do. Put your name on the building, you take it off the city, uh, the city's burden. And then that space, not only now benefiting our city, it's not on the taxpayer, and we are now having a space, an indoor space, mind you, that we can all meet and gather and host these wonderful cultural events.
Thank you, candidate.
Candidate Daudji, you have one minute to respond.
I, I do, I agree with everything that Tyler has said. A public-private partnership is A public-private partnership is what we should be doing. It should not be all on the taxpayers. We should have concerted effort to go out and find a way to raise money for endowments and foundations. That's the way to pull this together. That's the way to, to make it, um, acceptable to all the people that potentially will vote no in November. It should never be a political football. Politics should be nowhere part of the arts. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Unfortunately, we do not have time for a third round of post questions, but we will move on to the last round of lightning round questions. Again, candidates, please make sure that your cards are clearly readable to the audience. I will not be repeating questions. All right, firstly, is human trafficking in Johns Creek currently being adequately addressed in your opinion? Thank you, candidates. Do you believe the city should make finding a home for John, the Johns Creek Historical Society a priority? Thank you, candidates. Candidates, as a reminder before I say thank you, please hold them up. Has the city successfully encouraged resident participation and input on issues? Thank you, candidates. Should Johns Creek implement eco-friendly business policies in a wide-scale environmentally protective development? Thank you, candidates. Johns Creek will turn twenty in twenty twenty-six, which is a milestone for any city. Do you believe the city should budget money to celebrate this occasion? Thank you, candidates. Does Johns Creek need a fifth fire station? Thank you, candidates. Do you believe the city is doing enough to address the underage and illegal drug usage? Thank you, candidates. Finally, despite Johns Creek being, Johns Creek budget being a hundred K in twenty twenty-one, the Macedonia Historical Cemetery remains relatively unmaintained. Do you support its preservation? Thank you, candidates. Thank you so much for participating in this debate, candidates. Uh, firstly, to thank our tech team for helping us throughout this entire thing. You guys have been amazing. Now, thank you to all the candidates that have assisted me in tonight's debate. I would also like to thank our audience tonight for being so respectful and courteous to each candidate. Each job, great job from the S O S ambassadors tonight too. Thank you everyone for attending the debate and please remember to vote on November fourth to, or use any, or early voting options. Candidates, please remain on stage for a photo with the ambassadors team. Any of the excellent board members or dictators and attendants, please join us in the photo as well. Thank you so much. We're going to begin with closing statements, starting with, uh, candidate DiBiase and then coming down in the opposite direction.
I'm sorry, let's get this confirmed because we are a little bit over time right now. We want to make sure that we're not infringing on other people's times since they may have to leave, which results in kind of an unfair situation.
Yes, could you please have us as per like two-minute, uh, closing statements?
Yes.
If you do not like two-minute closing statements, you may exit now. Um, I hope the debate was here for the audience. Thank you everyone for your participation. Uh, everything that I said in the closing still stands. Candidates, uh, please join us all in a photo. Thank you so much. Well, unfortunately due to some confusion, we are still doing two-minute closing statements. They are good. Okay, thank you so much. All right, we will start in, we will start in reverse order, uh, to make it all fair. So candidate DiBiase, candidate DiBiase, give your stuff whenever you're ready.
Okay, um...
Apologies.
No worries. So I want to thank everyone for being here this evening and spending time with us. You've learned a lot, you've heard a lot, you've heard a whole bunch of different perspectives tonight on different topics and you have to ask yourself one simple question. Who, who, who do you trust to fulfill your vision for Johns Creek going forward in the future? Who, who will you actually trust to, to continue and do the work when the lights go down and the task still needs to be completed? Who are you comfortable that will do it? This is not a vanity project, this is not an experiment. This is too important for Johns Creek to be just put on Facebook. This is a commitment. This is a hard job and it's a commitment and I applaud everyone here that raises their hand and say, put me in because I know what it takes to do this job. I do want to say thank you and I sincerely, uh, I sincerely look forward to your vote in, in, uh, in November fourth. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, if you have time to try, please hold your applause till the end. Thank you.
So I've learned a lot tonight, I can tell you that. I've, I've learned that some things that I don't know and need to know. Um, it's interesting that when I learned, uh, that I was going to run and I submitted my application, I went and immediately started watching all of these city councils and going to city council meetings and planning meetings and, uh, I think I got asked the two questions that really went prepared. So I think you and I are a little confused a little bit tonight. So my, my, my thing is this, it, it, it's knowledge-based that I don't have, that he has. Um, that's, that's for sure. And that's okay, cause you learn on the job. My biggest thing that I want you to take from me tonight is that it doesn't matter what he thinks, but what I think, what Tyler thinks is what you think and I'm listening. That's, that's, that's the main thing, the point that I want to drive home. Second thing I want to talk about is I am so happy, finally, that we've heard the word division. Went to an event last night, there was actually a card with all the divided characters on one card that were kind of running as a team. Never seen that before. I kind of heard it in the background, I witnessed it, but I hadn't seen it, but at least we're talking about it tonight. We've actually heard the word division in council several times. A divided or division of council is unhealthy, period. So in one of my council meetings that I went to Saturday morning, I think John mentioned it earlier, there is a budget, the most important thing in, in, that the council does. And it was discussed for months and I sat through literally two hours of a, of, of a city council planning meeting before the council meeting took place in Alabama, five minutes after that. And that's when they decided to, decided to, to roll out this five million dollar amendment. It, I think that's amazingly unhealthy. Uh, right then and there, I saw the divisiveness or the division in the council and that's why I'm running. Look forward to earning your trust and your vote. Thank you guys, appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, candidate.
Well, I can tell you, like I said before, I love this city. I stepped up to serve and in every aspect of my life, there's service. You can follow the tracks. My actions speak for themselves. I step up to be involved in this community, whether that's in our faith communities, whether that's in the public safety and trying to make sure that our community can be better. You will have someone who, who not only is looking forward, who's looking in the future, who's looking at different ways for us to get that. I think we are, better days are still ahead. I am excited to run, I'm excited for the opportunity to serve this city, I'm excited to give back to the city, just in the, in the many ways that I've already been doing. And you can look at my resume and you can see that I care and you're going to get that from me every single time. My passion and my energy will always show up and I represent you. I'm not running on a slate, I'm running on an independent mind that is just what is best for the people of Johns Creek. We are a wonderful city and, and part of what, uh, as I'm door knocking, as I'm canvassing, I'm seeing that there's a difference in the identity here in our city. In Shakerag, in Medlock, and in Barnwell, there's very different opinions. Uh, some members don't even go to our parks that are in different hometowns. I want to see us be a connected city because a connected city spends money here. We reinvest back in our city, we have pride in our city and we are taking care of it. And we should have Alpharetta, Milton, Duluth, Roswell, spending money here, not us going there. We have to be different, we have to be the exception. That's what you get from me as a councilman.
Thank you, candidate.
I would first like to thank Student Leadership North for hosting and moderating tonight's debate. You have two very different choices for mayor that's going to take Johns Creek in one of two very different directions. The mayor's theme has been forward together and I would tell you what forward together means from my perspective. It means higher crime according to the chief of police. It means higher density, higher fees known as taxes. It means higher city staff turnover. It means more congestion, more dead. It means fewer first responders per capita. It means no transparency. It means a divided city and a divided city council. It means broken down emergency vehicles. It means wasteful spending. It means choosing to fund a performing arts center for one percent of our population over a fifth fire station for one hundred percent of our population. And it means listening to outside interest and special interest. I want to get Johns Creek back on track. I want to put the taxpayer first, public safety first, funding our critical services and our essential services first, funding and putting our needs above our wants, protecting our quality of life. I want to unify a city, bring healing to our city and to our city council and to the city staff. And then I want to have broad community engagement with the public with monthly mayor's meetings. I look forward to earning your vote for mayor of Johns Creek, November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Audience, again, please hold your applause until the end of the, uh, like the questions.
It's true. We have the opportunity in this election to decide what kind of city and what kind of community do we want to be. I have a friend that always says that she's an optimist. She asks if I'm an optimist or a pessimist and I say, no, I'd like to think that I'm a realist. Our community needs leadership. Leadership requires integrity. Integrity requires the truth. It is my great pride and I consider it the most important asset that I have as your mayor. That I have always told you the truth, I'm always going to tell you the truth. We've had a great run these last four years. I don't know if and when our community will ever be truly challenged, but it is so important to me that if and when, if that were to ever occur, that I would have the moral authority, if I needed to, to lead you with confidence and that you have confidence in me. There is so much misinformation. Yes, there's division. It's crazy to hear about this unifying thing when literally to his point, there was an ad in the paper put out with vote for these people. And there's a frame from four people here that you could tell are seeing off the same sheet of music. Let me tell you something, that's not an accurate truthful depiction of the city of Johns Creek. The city is not perfect, but I think it is very, very good. You go out tomorrow and you're staying at Johns Creek Police Park, does it look like it's about to fall apart or does it look like it just came off the showroom floor?
Thank you, candidate. Your time has lost.
Thank you.
I, I just want to come out because I just want to manage this time here, having difficulty. So friends, first and foremost, thank you very much for staying with us. Appreciate your expertise. The fact that you are here means you care about Johns Creek. Thank you for student leadership, for organizing this. Um, as I said in my opening remarks, I believe post three needs a change and I'm going to bring that change. I've expressed my leadership skills and my ability to create impact. If some of you remember, five years ago, we had a police chief situation where we had to go on a national search to find the next police chief. At that time, the former mayor of Johns Creek, Mike Butler and, and Ed Densmore, asked me to be on a committee with four people to interview the shortlisted people who were there to be becoming our next police chief. They trusted me. The reason why I'm involved in all these committees and organizations, because they have given me the trust. I'm blessed to get that trust and I hope I made them proud. We are a very good city. We are number one, but it's easy to become number one, very difficult to remain number one. The reason why I believe that we need a change is my opponent has made it very clear that we are not a transparent council. But my question is, if transparency is important, it goes both ways. How is it that he hasn't been transparent at a time when he should have been transparent during the budget process with his colleagues and bringing up things at the last moment? When you talk about together we made Johns Creek shine, the city shine, yes, that is true, but with a divided council, access baggage flowing us down. I a hundred percent agree. The access baggage, baggage is sitting on post three. Thank you for your...
Thank you, candidate. Audience, please hold your applause. Thank you.
Thank you, S O J C and thank you, members of the staff. And to my neighbors, I really thank you for spending your evening with us. I just wanted to tell you, it has been an incredibly fortunate experience that I got to represent you. I don't have the luxuries of entering families, I have to work with numbers. Believe me, despite having our differences, we still manage to move the city forward and that is more important. Why? Cause it's my home, your home, our home. Together we'll make this city shine and that's exactly what we've been trying to believe for the past four years. There is some room for improvement, we will work on it. And I also talk about, people talk about ads and paper. Believe me, we know how bad it is. We've been receiving it for the last six to eight months. I don't want to go through that again because I would love to go to the council and say, I love coming to work, but every time you put about anything, you know the famous quote, good ideas go to Washington to die? At times I was feeling that's the same thing about Johns Creek. What you require, you steel yourself because you have a larger responsibility to the citizens of this city. Here's what I want to tell you, with your steady support, the city will once again shine, we will make the city thrive. In the language of a former president, he talked about USA as the shining city of a hill. Johns Creek is our hill. Let's make it shine. Again, the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, candidate. Audience, please hold your applause. Thank you.
As the close tonight, I want you to leave me one thing. Johns Creek is the best city to build in America and I'm the best candidate to build on the progress that we are doing. In the next four years, I'll strengthen the public safety, use advanced AI technology to improve the traffic even before looking at the construction part. Improve the mobility and connectivity within the city. And support smart and balanced growth and create a vibrant town center where people can gather. And create a career-focused environment for students and the future generations so that they can thrive. And create the environment where our kids and the future generations will pick Johns Creek as their home over other cities. What I offer, education, experience, results. More importantly, commitment to listen and keep Johns Creek residents first. I seek your trust, support. Together, we can keep Johns Creek progressing into the future. My opponent has been saying about the projections, like a financial projections, like the financial model. The model worked tremendously. And nine percent projections was based on the budget number. The actual number came out much higher, twenty-eight million. So based on that, the projection of seven percent is correct. It's much lower than that. Like in, based on the model, twenty-two, we had eleven million dollars out of this. Twenty-three, eight point five. Twenty-four, two million dollars. And now it's five point five million dollars. The financial model is working fine. So let's not focus in the financial model that's working. If it doesn't, then we come back. If one variable is changing, the other variable is making for that. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Again. So in two thousand and six, our city got off to a great start. Firstly, responsible government was to be shown also the citizen's family. But in the last few years, I think we have strayed and lost our focus. The few that city council members focused on the priority is protecting the wants over news. Our city is already number one for the one, for what it is already. So why change the ecosystem and change the character of the city that made us the number one to begin with? What truly matters, what truly matters actually? Number one, safety. Safety is the talking point. It is actually the essential foundational of the city. We must make sure that we truly support and fully fund, equip and resource the first responders departments. Number two, quality of life. I support and I commit to make sure that our parks are reserved, reserved and completed. But also make sure that I have, we have the pedestrian bike friendly city. Also make sure that we have the, we address the strong water addresses, uh, issues. And mostly, lastly, but thirdly, it is the firstly responsible, technically, as well. We have to make sure that we, every, every dollar that we spend is necessarily accountable and transparent. And your, your presentation has been a, stated for granted. Few of the city members have followed just other leaders and without even asking for support for the city. We can be most focused and accountability and transparency to the city. We have a lot of work to do, but we can, with your support and more, we can bring the city back on track. I promise to be your voice on the children. I promise to be the independent voice to present your interest. I will be a tough negotiator, negotiator for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidate. Audience, may now applause. All right, as we conclude this debate, thank you all candidates for participating. Thank you, our tech team. And thank you so much to our distinguished guests who have attended this in such late into the night. I would also like to encourage all candidates and any members of the S.L.N. board to please join us on a photo on the stage. Everyone else, you are free to go. Thank you for joining us.